To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, please take a roll.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Jas.
Yes.
And Brenneman and Walsley are absent with notice.
All right, do we have any additions or approval of the agenda?
Make motion to approve.
One second. Any discussion? Carrying none will vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right, do we have motions or actions on the minutes from the previous meeting? June 20th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Notable vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right, no bills, no Karen, so no bills. That's all good. Public comment? Any comments from the crowd on anything that's not on the agenda? Carrying none. We'll move forward. Next up, visitors. Clint Simmons with Gil Hogan Construction regarding street closure by the school project.
Yeah, we're looking to close the street if it would be possible at first there. Just to get a steel staging area where we're getting BNC.
All right, you guys need to see that. I think Teresa had a map of some sort in our, in with our staff.
Do you want to see it?
Yes.
Cindy, you either. You got it?
Thanks.
And if I remember right, two to four weeks.
Yep.
And it will still leave the two streets for any of the citizens that live there. Close the alley will be open and Southeastern will continue to do.
It's just their job.
Right. Yeah.
I drove around the property where the school maintenance. I was like, oh, I wonder if there's a place over there to put it, but there's not, there's nothing.
Yeah.
Not right now with the building to do with anything going on at some point.
All right. Any questions? For Clint, we need a motion and an approval on that, so it's in the minutes.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the proposal for a street closure.
All right, Gil Hogan. Any other discussion?
Do you anticipate less than four weeks, or is that...?
We want to mediate at least now that staging area we're hoping that we can get the shop or main shop done and then use that little part of the office.
Okay. To the south there of the street, right? Yeah.
Stowed down hopefully.
Yeah. Well, you've had pretty good weather except for a little rain.
Just find it.
Yeah. All right, if there's no more discussion, well, Bowen.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Thanks, Clint.
Thank you.
You bet. I always get too fast and then we get ahead of the seven o'clock. Here.
Well, seven o'clock, actually.
Oh, is that seven?
Yep.
I got seven oh three.
Oh, seven o'clock. You're starting to put them up to time.
Definitely advertised.
We gotta roll that clock back when we go on the mall.
There you go. All right, the next item under hearing's applications, agreements, resolutions, ordinance is a seven o'clock public hearing and approval for the updated 2017 to 2037 comprehensive plan.
Good evening.
Give us your name and everything so we know who you're...
Sounds good. My name is Sean Higgy. I'm from Southeastern Council of Governments. For the past about 10 to 11 months, I've been working with the Planning and Zoning Commission of Hartford to update the 2017 to 2037 comprehensive plan. This has been, we've been having monthly meetings, and during those monthly meetings, we've been having work sessions to go over the different sections within the old comprehensive plan to bring it up to date. I guess it's been about five years. Just a little bit of background, comprehensive plans, Hartford has a tendency every five years to do an update and then every 10 years to do a major revision, basically replacing the old one. 2017 was the last major revision. So this one started in 2022. Obviously, it's 2023, but it was about five years. This is just a general update, so we're not doing a full on revision, but there are a lot of changes because Hartford's been growing pretty fast over the past five years. So my goal is to just kind of give you guys a rundown of like the major changes that we've made or the things of note. The general stuff that we've done that doesn't have as much substance is updating the population information and the census demographics. Since 2017, the new census came out, so we've updated the 2020 census information. In addition, we went out to the American Community Surveys, which is kind of the estimates on all census years to get that demographic information. That took a large portion, including with that its housing information from last time or from the housing study or information from the counties. All that information's been the first two to three chapters of the comprehensive plan. The major updates that we did are all of the maps. The city limits since 2017 have expanded, so with that, we've updated all of the maps to include the new annexations from 2017 to present. In addition to that, we expanded different growth areas and the future land use and current land use maps. In page, if you want to look at it, starting on page 25 is when we start talking about the land use. These are the substantive changes. Page 26 and 27 have both the current land use and the future land use maps. What we did is we went out and did an in-person survey of the area, basically walking around Hartford, marking down what each house or building is currently being used as. I want to explain this because it sometimes makes it a little confusing. The current land use is how the land is being used. It's not necessarily what it's zoned for. So it could very well be something was changed zoning to like residential, but there is a commercial building that's there. We mark that down as commercial use because it's currently being used as commercial even though the zoning is different. So that's the difference between the two maps because you likely will see them come up periodically. In addition, we worked with the Land and Zoning Commission to come up with the future land uses. That's kind of, that's what we would like to see within Hartford in the different areas in the future. Now, what's important to note is this is not something in the future land use that is going to happen. It's not something that's in areas outside of city limits. If you see something outside the city limits and it has marked residential, that does not mean that the city's actively going to purchase the land. It's just saying at some point in the future, if that gets annexed in, we would like that area to be residential, commercial. That's just important to note because there's a lot of times when you see a future land use map, you think, oh my gosh, the city's immediately looking to purchase that area and expand. This is just kind of in an ideal world, what we would like those future land uses to be. In terms of the policies and the goals, we cleaned up some of the formatting throughout the comprehensive plan, but on page 36, we changed some of the wording to clarify what the goal meant. Specifically, it was, the purpose of it was to separate heavy industrial from single-family residential uses. Back in the 2017 version, that was just the same term residential. We wanted to specify it's the separate single-family residential from heavy industrial and use different uses such as multifamily housing or commercial between the two. So we just specified and clarified what it was that we wanted in those sections. Those are the major changes that we had for the comprehensive plan. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I guess one question I have, I think all this data is amazing. I guess, how does the city implement or how do we best utilize this data from a development perspective? I mean, it's nice to have this, right? How do we use it or what?
Perfect. So the comprehensive plan is what it sounds like. It's a planning document. So it's used as justification for any land use and zoning decisions that might come before you guys in the future. Again, it's just kind of a roadmap of where you want to go for 20 years. So if you have any change of zone or if you have a zoning regulations that you're looking at, one of the best ways to use the plan is to look at it and say, this is kind of what we were looking at in the future for this. So because this is what we're planning for, we can move in that direction. The other way to use it, like you mentioned, with a lot of the demographic information, is while the plan is meant to guide you in this direction, we all know that things change every five years. So when you look at those demographics, it also gives you that idea of, this is where we were on the 2023 update. It's 2026, population has doubled. So what these uses and ideas for the future were then are not what it is now. So it just gives us a sense of justifying our decisions of why it is we want to change from like a single-family residential zone to multifamily even if it was in the future land use as a single-family. It's also a good tool for city staff. A couple of the portions in it for the growth zones talk about water facilities and wastewater facilities. Obviously, Hartford's been building some new wastewater facilities.
Wrong.
So that, yeah. So that was added in the comprehensive plan to basically say that this is where we're at at this point. So it's not just used for justification, but it's also used to just provide that information in a clear document. So if city staff turns over or if there's new city councilors, new mayors, or whoever in the next 15, 20 years that's down the line, there's a document that at least has that information there so we have an idea of the standards and situations that are.
I really like the demographic information. I think that tells us a lot about what we're doing.
Hartford has grown dramatically over the past five years. There's a lot of changes for that.
And I guess on page 38, it answers my question, doesn't it? It tells you how to implement the plan.
Simple, yeah.
Plan implementation.
And I think one thing to note, though, is that this is just the plan. It's not like actual, it's not new regulations. It's not new laws. It's just used as that justification for what we want to do for land use and zoning policies.
This year, we also incorporated, we looked at, we sent the CCOG, the Community Development Plan that ICG did, so tried to incorporate that as well as kinds of thoughts we're looking at.
Yeah, a lot of the future land use map was, we were looking at that community development plan on the different ideas that were going around the city, and that was implemented into the future land use map. So that's kind of why we have certain things the way that they are.
I used to have those picture ending books when you were a kid. If you did this, 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 it should look like this, but if something changes, then you might have a different look. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'd really like to see us break into the top 20 cities. We're number 22 on the list, and I'd really like to have a personal poll. So I'm trying to recruit people as fast as I can.
That explains why that older demographic is...
That older demographic is picking up. We're really pushing the pool.
Oh, yeah.
That is our big selling feature.
That was a typical.
Well, that's to be determined yet. All right, any other questions? You bet. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
We need to actually go approve this by the council.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023 to 14 presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right. Seven ten hearing is reading a warrant at 7:45. Rezone application submitted by Cam Companies LLC for parcel 59074 to the packet.
Yeah, the last one was let the scroll through. Yeah.
This thing, we used to print all this.
I'm wanting to save my paper.
Oh, we should get raises.
I wonder.
Oh. All right, this is parcel... 59074.
Blue building on Western there?
Yes.
Plus land.
Plus the property between Tam and Oil and Ace Hardware, 801 Southwestern. Yep. Currently at a zone, community commercial. They're looking at rezoning it to regional commercial, which is just the next step up. It's not light industrial or anything. It's still in the commercial realm.
So there'd be, just the way I read it, just clarified, there'd be the ADA units on the bottom, which changes it to regional commercial.
Yes. No one is here, but the plan for the property is to put a mixed-use building, three-story. We came to planning and zoning at their meeting last week and discussed that with them. With community commercial as it is zoned now, you can have commercial property on the main floor and residential up above. He would like to put ADA units on the main floor, obviously easier access, where you know those that are inflicted with that. So he would like to have some, you know, residents on the main floor. Two is what he had proposed at the planning and zoning, one to two. So the rezone to regional commercial is just to allow some residents on the main floor. Yeah.
Building the school.
All right, any other questions or discussions on this?
Make motion to approve ordinance 745 to rezone the property from community commission to regional commercial.
Second.
Any other discussion? Carrying none. We'll vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right. Would be nice to get that building built.
I think you'd fill it up fast. It's a good location.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. We appreciate it.
You bet.
We'll go through the work.
All right, next up, we have a special event permit for Hartford Area Fire and Rescue Public Safety.
That's why I live here. That's why I wore the shirt.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So that you would know that's why I was here. So on Saturday, August 26th, from 10:30 in the morning till 12:30 in the afternoon, Hartford Fire and Rescue is hosting our fifth annual Public Safety Day. We invite exhibitors that are targeting preparedness and prevention activities. They come in and we invite people from the community and surrounding areas to come and visit with them to see who we are and what we do. And in order to facilitate that in the best way possible, we would like to close the street in front of the fire station from the corner of, I think it's Kingsbury, right? Kingsbury to Western from about nine o'clock in the morning for set up purposes till 1:30 in the afternoon so we can get our cleanup completed.
Perfect. From what we've seen in the past, great event, nice attendance, good public service.
Is there plenty of room to park in that area once that's closed down? Yeah, we're blocked from Western.
So we don't park any outside vehicles in there. We'll land a care flight helicopter in that area. We'll have some of our trucks off to the side so that we can get out. But that area is strictly left open for people to mill around, come in, come out. We've never designated parking in the last few years. People just park out in the residential areas and walk on in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already talked to Casey at Creekside. He's fine with the street closure, and some of our folks will use his parking lot for our parking.
He'll get that smoker going. He'll be selling her in.
Oh, heck, yeah. I'd be all about you doing that right by my business.
All right, any questions for Linda or any action from the council?
Motion to approve Special Event Application for the Hartford Area Fire and Rescue Public Safety Day.
Second.
We got two seconds?
Three, almost.
Almost three. That makes it really official. Any other discussion? All right, and not a vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you, Linda.
So now that's been approved.
Oh, boy.
Oh, here we go. Oh, no.
Did you catch?
So what I am asking the council to do, if it be your desire, it's our desire, to waive the application fee, I think it's $20, to request street closure. As I said, this is a public service event. We're a nonprofit entity who very much look forward to serving all in our community as we're called upon, and just asking for a goodwill gesture on your part to waive that fee for us. Ooh, Travis, this is going, this is, this is a slippery slope we're going down. Yeah, we've been down this slope.
Kind of.
Every single...
It's like taking money out of your left pocket.
Can I volunteer to donate the $20 fee myself?
Well, that would be much appreciated if you would like to.
How about I'll do that?
Well, you didn't listen to his contingency. He wants to put a big billboard out.
Right.
Do you need some space, exhibitor space? Because we can just, you know, slide you right on in.
Yep. So I'll donate $20 back to the firm.
Well, that'd be great.
Thank you so much. We sure appreciate that.
You bet.
All right, thanks a lot.
Boy, now people are gonna start doing that.
There you go.
I like how we manage that.
I had the fire department at my business today, so I'm pretty appreciative of the fire department and fire business.
And your employee was very concerned about how we were doing better.
Oh, well, it's awesome.
All right. Thank you so much. Stop down on the 26th. It's gonna be a great event.
Hey, how do you become an exhibitor? What's the information on that?
So I, what we are looking for is people who do maybe prevention of some type of an injury, accident, fire prevention, or public safety information, preparedness information. So if you'd like to exhibit, you can just let me know.
Try to make one again. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, 605-929-5051. Leave that out of there. Around camera now.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
All righty, thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to reports. Deputy Gardis, you are up first.
Hello, everyone. We had 282 calls for service in the month of June, so pretty busy, pretty busy time, I would say. The only thing I, two things I just want to highlight, the fireworks calls from June 28th till today, we only had nine fireworks complaints come in. All of them, no citations were issued, just all warned of the city ordinances. So just want to notate that. And then maybe in the Brood Lane area, I don't know what ward that would be. We've had, we had some calls for service there that has increased our patrol effort. So you will see like deputies out over by Deer Hollow, Baker, from basically from Opal all the way up to Diamond. We're just doing extra foot patrol. There's a lot of juvenile delinquency kind of going on. So we've been talking, partnering with the property managers over there of how we can kind of nip some of the issues that we've been having. Nothing crazy, just kids kind of really, here's the line, they're like taking like six steps over it. It just kind of, that's some good behavior over there. So making some really good contacts with the people that are living over there, just trying to get a feel of how things are actually going on there. And I've had some pretty solid contacts with residents over there, and they do appreciate the efforts that we're making of, because there's a ding dong ditching happened like at midnight and people are being disturbed to, we had a dumpster fire this during the fourth. So I don't know if that was just a firework that got thrown in there and then a fire started, but I, that's, I don't know about that. But and then everything from just kids just really picking on each other where kids are crying and that stuff, so.
Back to fireworks. Our ordinance says they can't shoot on public, on city property, right? So like Long Turtle Creek in the park.
I think, I would say, I don't think it specifically says you can't be on public property, but obviously you're supposed to be on your own property.
Right.
Well, then, well, then that would take shooting off on the road then. Then you could have shot.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just curious.
I was just trying to think of what I was wearing. I don't think it's...
Well, this morning when I rode through there on my bike, through Turtle Creek, there was tons of stuff on the bike path.
I believe it.
On the path. That's why I was just curious. I didn't know how that, I should have looked it up. I didn't, I didn't think about it at the time until you just, you know, you mentioned that. Yeah. I did, I was just curious. I didn't know how that...
I'll have to check on that. I can't remember how I did that.
You're right, Sean. If we say you can't shoot in parks, then can't you shoot in the street?
Then you can't shoot on the side, I mean.
Was it like canisters or was just...
No, little stuff.
It probably...
Could have blown over.
Oh, and maybe it just blew in. Might have just blown in. But it looked like, you know, sometimes you can see like a flash mark on the, on the tar. It looked like they'd lit some of them.
There's a six pack of Bud Light next to it, too.
Wasn't me.
So anyway, I was just curious.
The scabies were lit up.
Oh, man.
So there's, you can always pick up their garbage.
What's the process?
My dog was doing a part of eating all the...
Those are like subpoenas, garnishment papers, child support papers, those sorts of things. So that's, that's the difference between like the police department and sheriff's office, is that we handle giving papers out. Yeah, that's about it. Nothing to, more to report besides the, just some juvenile delinquency that we're trying to curb, so.
All right, any questions for the deputy? All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Have a good night.
Amy is not here. We have her report in the packet.
They're really excited for the good road band to come back.
I think they've rearranged.
It's there into the sun.
Right. They're gonna move, actually move the, yeah, it's gonna be someplace here on, like right up...
I think the bands can be, the second versus first.
Oh, right here.
Right here at the intersection.
Yep.
That's the closure that she has formed was approved.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
That'd be good because last year, man, it was right into the sun down there. I'm gonna be gone. You're going to walk in there.
That's what I've been told.
All right.
You're gonna write it on a review?
I doubt that. Good. All right, we're gonna move on to the most exciting part of the evening. Our city engineer report. Man, are we loaded for you tonight.
Great to hear it. Good evening. A few quick things, reviewed a couple plots. One Wester Meadows, one Naps Landing. Approval on each of those approvals have been signed, I believe, and sent back to the developers on the water resource recovery facility. Really in that contract phase now where I expect we'll be going out and getting those bid packages bid starting here in July through the fall of this year. And then as those come in, we'll be able to update the budget accordingly. Update on the bike and rail trail, actually Friday after I submitted this to Teresa, we had received a geotechnical report. So that's in the hands of our structural engineers now working on the wall design. I anticipate that will be a couple of weeks and then we'll be able to get that on the streets. Still not...
Quick question, sorry, quick question on that. Is that still planned to start this year?
Yes, yep, the grant by this year, yep. So we're tracking closely. I've had her back from FEMA, but we'll wait to hear on that one. Reached out again on the storm shelter. No word on that. Sophie and Teresa have been very good about staying on them just to get a response to where it's at. The Highway 30 Waterway Extension funding was approved as requested. The city got a $500,000 30-year loan at 3.25%. So we'll be able to push forward on that project. As I mentioned previously, we'll be coordinating that one with the installation of the trunk sewer, just in hopes of maybe one contractor can give both those projects and really help with some coordination and not stepping on doubts. So looking forward to that, likely bid that later this year with plans for construction next. Lastly, Western Avenue, interchange approach, pushing those plans forward, really working on vertical alignment and drainage at this time, looking into how reshaping that road section is gonna affect the adjacent properties, if any temporary or permanent easements will be needed to be had for the widened section. And just pushing that forward and working on that coordination. Are there any questions on our report?
I feel like talking tonight, I guess. Storm shelter seems like ever since I've been here, there's just nothing. So when we say we're reaching out, what does that mean? Or is it a, is it an email? Is it a phone call? Are they even responding? Or is it just completely like, what feedback have we gotten from them? Because it's just no change, no change. Week after week, I'm like, what's going on here?
It's usually checking with emails, and they are responding. Basically, the state has approved the plans and we're waiting for FEMA. They have got, the state has not gotten any response from FEMA. We submitted the plans in October, I'm not sure.
I believe so.
They were supposed to, what, four, six months? We surpassed that deadline and so, yeah.
They were supposed to, what, four, six months? We've surpassed that deadline, and so, yeah.
So we're reaching out to the, we're reaching out to the state or to FEMA?
To the state we're going through. I don't know who's, who's a part of it at FEMA.
Who our FEMA contact is for this project. I think the state handles a whole back course.
Yeah, FEMA is kind of regional, so the state, yes, state coordinates that with FEMA. So we're reaching out to the state. That's, that makes me nervous. We've worked with FEMA before. They're slow.
Sounding competent may not, you know.
Well, they like to award money, but giving it is a different deal.
There you go.
Is that a good way to say that without being implied? I mean, they really do like to flourish that they're giving all these awards.
We got all this money, but.
But what, to give it is a whole other deal.
You've got to be patient.
Yep. And that's pretty standard with, oh, no, I guess.
I mean, like, when we do work in the floodplain and we have got to get, you know, through FEMA, you've got to follow MOLMOR or map revision or whatever, you know, that whole process takes forever as well. I mean, it's ninety days review, back to you for ninety days, back to them for nine, I mean, it's just kind of terrible.
Michael, are you, do you guys, does ISG have any coordination, if that maybe be the right word, between Turtle Creek and Maple Pass on getting that sewer? You guys, are you doing anything with that, getting their sewer hooked up underneath?
They must have an agreement done.
Yeah, the agreement is done from what I, but are you, is, has ISG had any, from our standpoint? Are they gonna check this when it's done, or is Craig gonna, I mean, you know what I mean?
With all sewer mains, yes.
I just want to make sure that somebody's keeping their eyes on this deal when we get, you know, they're taking it in pretty danger.
With the roads, with sewer mains, water mains, yes, they do inspections.
We're out there.
I just want to make sure that somebody's.
Yeah.
In terms of project coordination, that'll actually, that'll be between Maple Pass's engineer. They'll, they'll have all those questions. But we're, I mean, we're obviously representing out of the city, making sure what's installed.
I'm just curious. I just wanted to, you know, I just want to make sure somebody's keeping their eyes on this deal so we know what's happening. But it looks like they're ready to start. Have they given us a timeframe yet when they're gonna dig under, because they're gonna, that's born in, right?
They've got that done.
Oh, it's already born in?
They did the boring last year.
Okay, so all they have to do then is hook from like Mickelson Road to the home station. Okay. Okay, that's good to know. Okay. All right, anything else, Michael? Are we gonna move on to your action item?
There's no other questions, Jim, on the action items.
Any other questions?
Do you think you're really able to get that trail built in time by design and build?
It will, truthfully, it will hinge on FEMA's review time. We've given them as much information as we can to try to expedite that, but ultimately it comes down to that Department of FEMA's workload, because I believe that's a whole separate Department of FEMA that is doing the storm shelter, if that's any sort of company.
Storm shelter, are you asking about?
I'm just talking about.
He's talking about the bike trail.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
So in terms of, in terms of actual sculptural construction, I believe it can install relatively quickly. It's just beginning to start once we get FEMA approval.
And we have that finish before the end of the year, right? Worst case scenario, if FEMA doesn't answer us back in time, then what?
We build it anyway until the money comes?
Our, we can't start.
They can't start.
Can't start without it. Then it'll be a question whether you do want to build it anyway and use city funds, or if you want to forego the project.
Or we'll try to.
Or another grant.
Or, yep, start over again, and, yep.
Five more years, we can get it done.
All right, the action item under the engineer is to review, approve the contract for CMAR services with Rice Lake Construction Group. You know, I'll have it in your packet if you have a chance to review. I have a question, Michael. Maybe you can or can't answer this. So I see in Rice Lake's contract, there's a whole citation on construction management. Okay, which I assume that there would be. But we also have a construction management contract with ISG. Is that a double up, or what?
No, so that is, so Rice Lake is gonna manage all of their subs. That's, that's what the construction manager does. What, what our construction management contract is to their shop drawing review, making sure what they, what their subs or what Rice Lake is saying they're gonna install matches what we've required for the spec and is up to, up to what we've been saying we're gonna provide. That's also, I believe, construction staking, just where to place things, grades, all of that, making sure we don't infringe on neighboring properties. And then we'll, we'll be doing, you know, site visits just to make sure what Rice Lake is doing is, is correct to the project and making sure, for whatever reason, just keeping that honest as well. They're gonna, they're gonna keep their subs in line, but we're gonna do our due diligence and make sure that what they're doing is true to the points.
So at the end of the day, the project's done. The final stamp goes on from ISG, correct? Or from Rice Lake?
In terms of the, what is constructed.
Project, yeah, project's done, sign off, Craig's ready to start turning the valves on. Who puts the final stamp on? Is it Rice Lake? Is it ISG? Is it both?
I'm not entirely sure. I believe it's both, because, because we'll, we'll check everything. We'll do a punch list like we would in any, you know, hard bit project. But they'll also be available to troubleshoot anything, I believe, is what it is expressed in the past.
I'm asking some of these questions because it's a lot of mine. We're spending, this is the biggest project the city will do. And I guess I want to make sure we're not over, you know, that we're not paying for two, paying two companies to do the same thing. I mean, I hope that's a fair, fair question. I just want to make sure that we're not doubling up.
Yeah, I think the structure that, as I'm reading through this, and once again, I came in at the tail end of this whole process, and ISG, you guys represent us as the owners, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you guys are the owners representative, and the C Mar eventually has the answer to you guys.
Yes.
Everything, and the way I read the contract, that's exactly how that ultimately works out. I have some questions on the contract, but that's probably more for this guy.
Okay.
I don't want to get into.
Okay.
So maybe what might help part in this is if we had hard gritted the project, right, Tuscan, and we'd be out there every single day, at least one or two of us babies in a contractor, making sure everything was right. With Rice Lake being there and them being, you know, at risk and is part of their game, they have more skin in the game. We'll still be able to check on it, but it will not be, my understanding is it will not be as perhaps rigorous as if it was just a GM.
Okay.
And I, I'll have Justin.
I'm just, I'm just curious. I just.
I'll run it for you.
As I read through this today, I thought, wow. It seemed to me, as I read it, I thought, I just want to make sure, ask the question. Are we, are we paying, paying twice for something that we shouldn't be paying twice for?
That's a good question.
So, anyway.
No, as I asked that question last time, it's fair to pay to plan, to make a plan.
To plan, to plan. Yeah.
So it's like, it's expensive and just take a lot of time.
And we understand that. As public entities, we work under, I would, we, we work under a different set of rules. That different set of rules comes with a different set of price things. That's the unfortunate part.
And as a councilman, I'd much rather know that I've got an engineer going out there to look at it than me going out there.
Oh, correct, yeah. Or I'm not saying.
What's she supposed to be doing? Because I got no idea.
Right.
So how's it going out here?
Yeah.
I see there's a whole.
That'd be my question. So how's it going?
I might do that. Hey, ah, how you guys doing on it? Yeah.
So one question I would have is if something would go wrong.
Yeah.
Who's liable for it?
That's why, yeah.
Do we go after ISG and then Rice Lake, or how does that work? You know, so that's one question I would have.
Exactly, Craig. That's why I asked the question. At the end of the day, who puts the PE stamp on this deal? You don't have to answer. You can ask, but find us an answer. You see what I mean?
Who's liable for it, right?
In, in terms of who's liable, Tom.
What do you think, Doc?
It depends on what, I mean, what the.
What it is. I think there's different areas that each would be liable for.
Well, that's kind of, now you're asking funny questions. It either works or it doesn't work. That's what Craig's saying. I like how Craig asked the question. At the end of the day, if it doesn't work, who's responsible?
I mean, they're both gonna be subject to making it work according to what's been planned and approved.
Right.
Whether that falls on Rice Lake or ISG.
I mean, Rice Lake is guaranteed that this thing's gonna work for this number.
Right.
Correct. That they're gonna put it built and it's gonna work for them. Yes, yeah.
For this number.
I agree.
We pay this and we get that.
Yes.
So if there's a design issues that create the problem, they're gonna come back to ISG and say.
And that's not uncommon to see a GC, you know, in a lawsuit with an engineer.
Everybody's gonna be involved if it comes up.
The real world example I have is we just finished wiring a pool, and the owner asks my guy, where do they, what do, you know, why does it smell like chlorine? I thought this was supposed to be a saltwater pool. And my guy said, this isn't a saltwater pool. The owner's like, I'm paying for a saltwater pool. So Craig goes out there and he's like, for this valve, that's the sink. We've asked for that since day one. Now you reach contract, right? So that's when that process begins.
I mean, if you, if you end up in a situation, they're, they're both gonna be dragged.
Okay, okay.
It's just been evident that that's gonna happen.
I mean, I'm not trying to be a smart eye. I'm just saying.
I get it.
Because in my world, when a PE puts his name on, basically that says, I say that this thing's correct. That's why I'm asking.
It's been built according to the plans and specifications we developed.
Yeah, right, 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 right. Okay.
So, yeah, on the flow chart, ISG is often, they have that little spur, their little spur, they kind of have their, you know, you're still attached to the big project, but that little spur puts you on the hook for everything.
Making sure that it all, yeah.
Designed correctly.
Right.
Making sure you can flush.
Exactly.
For the next thirty to fifty years.
Yes. I mean, I, but when I read that, that's what made the, I thought, what the heck? So who's actually, so that's what I, I've been waiting all day to ask that question. I'm just telling you. All right.
So have you heard enough that we can?
Yes, we're ready to move.
Oh, you guys have. I'm doing this contract. I've got two questions.
Okay, have a laugh. So this is your time.
Okay, so it is probably more for you, I would assume, but on page thirteen of the contract, so let me know when you're there. Well, it just says, it's, okay, on section B, number one, it says the C Mar may not self-perform more than number percent. So is that saying that the C Mar can self-perform as much as they want? There's not a specific number, the percentage there.
It all goes out for bids.
What's that?
It all goes out for bids, so that if they, if somebody's in higher than what they can do it for, then they'll do it.
So, yeah, so essentially, they can, the, the C Mar can self-perform as much as they want to in order to save cost.
As long as they're.
As long as they're.
As long as they're.
A little better for whatever.
They had said straight, they said they can't do the electrical.
You have to be qualified to do the work.
Right.
You have to have a contractor license.
Right, right.
I thought you didn't have to take a little bit because of your C Mar. Your C Mar says in here, I think you have to.
But you gotta do it, you gotta be able to do it.
The lowest responsive, so the C Mar will award the subcontract for the work under the work authorization to responsible bidder submitting the lowest responsive bid for that portion of the work. So I thought there was a way they could not.
So responsible, responsibly.
Yeah, so if I understand, the lowest is still higher than they had budgeted, they would do it themselves. They could do it themselves if they chose to, was my understanding. Because they're guaranteed max out of pocket if they choose to take that. Is that fair? Did I understand them correctly?
That's a good question right there.
I mean, my understanding of that, their description of that was if that little bid exceeded what they had budgeted for that phase of the project, they could self-perform it. Or they could take it.
If they're qualified, yeah.
If they're qualified. Or they could take it, because maybe they're gonna save money somewhere else, but still, they're locked in to that guaranteed maximum price.
If they're a responsible contractor that can throw a really good price in here, they're gonna let them do the work, because you're still gonna make money off that contract.
Right, right.
So, I mean, this is pretty much their all in amount.
Right.
I mean, the goal is to make.
I agree, right. Yep. And that's why, that's why they do it, because they're, they're putting their own self at risk.
What's the contingency allowance fund? So to my understanding, that's, those are funds set outside of the G, of the gross?
There's always some unexpected.
Some unexpected costs.
So that's what I don't understand, though. So we have this price that's locked in at whatever they have under, twenty-one point two million. But then I'm reading, I started coming across this verbiage for contingency allowance fund, which is pretty much saying, to my understanding, that the project, in theory, could go higher than the twenty-one point two.
Three hundred thousand's built in.
That's already built into the GMP, yes.
On, on page. Exhibit B, which is, I think the last page of what Teresa said.
That's the old, if I told Travis I want four outlets.
Okay.
And then when he shows up, I say, actually, I want six.
But you want the price for four. Everybody does.
Rice Lake's gonna, hard to get that contingency back in the city, because it makes them look good for the next job.
For sure, right, you can do that, right.
Means we can't re-alance your capital contingency.
So the C Mar contingency is three hundred thousand, that's.
And that's built right in.
And that's built.
That's built into the GMA.
Okay.
Okay, any other, Sean?
No, those are the.
Jake?
I'm good.
Travis, you got anything else you want to ask?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Sid?
I like it.
We beat everything. It's official.
Not the first time through. Yes, I do like it.
All right, here we go. All right, we need action from the council.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract to award Rice Lake the C Mar services. What do we, is that good?
I think approve the contract with Rice Lake for C Mar services.
Yes, that's what I'd like to say.
Yep.
I made a motion to approve.
I thought that's what I heard you say.
I'll second it.
And a second. Any other discussion? All right, if not, we'll vote. Madison?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
All right. Craig, public service report.
Just a couple of things in my report that I was gonna talk about. One is billboard signs, the welcome to Hartford signs that are coming in. They're going to be.
Monument signs.
Yeah, monument signs.
The little.
They're going to be coming in at the end of the month here, if you thought around the twentieth, we'll be getting on those, get those put in. The two of them, we do have land locked in. We are working with the state right now to make sure that we don't have to resubmit for permit to be in the right way over on Highway thirty-eight.
Yeah.
The one up here is actually on easement.
Oh, okay. That one's okay. This one, you're.
We're, Harry's pretty sure that we're, but just in case, we want to make sure he gets it like taken care of before we switch him out.
So what about?
The one up there, we're either looking at Maple Pass or maybe talking to Sam about it, but in the middle, we got to talking about it. We were wondering about this land where the lift station's gonna be, because we'll have power already there. It'll be on city property. It's a little further out of town. I did kind of put together a map today, just kind of where we, you know, where the lift station can be, if you guys don't know. Be on the four sixty-five, the gravel out there.
Yeah. South side.
Yeah, south side of the road, and it'll be on the east.
Can we see your map?
I'll take the map if you got it.
It'll be on the east side of, of the road, of four sixty-five, or so, those are two different.
We could have by Mickelson Road and Maple Pass. We'll have to get an easement from either Ascent or Maple Pass. And they both expressed that they would work with us with that, but, you know, that always takes work to try to get that and get the right placement or whatever.
Sign.
And just thinking about land we're adding in, and as we grow that, maybe the further we can get it east, won't need to be moved in the future, you know, we can get it. And then in the future, I mean, prayers are, you know, when we get the lift station there next year, there'll be power there, so, because we'll need that for the lift station, so a lot of power for light there. It'll be on our property, so we don't need to secure an easement.
You won't have a minimum payment every month for the billboard sign to be there, because you already paying that through your electrical and.
Cool.
So.
And it's a low-lying spot, too, so it's not really good for anything else. I mean.
You're gonna have to build that up or anything, or was it?
We'd have to look at that when we get the layout done, that stuff, once we get the lift station started and that stuff.
Just so you're sure you guys are good with that.
Do we need a motion for that, or no? Just let them do it?
I think they can let them do it.
We'll just, yeah, we'll, you know, we'll.
Something for further approval. Yeah. Yeah. Get it there Craig and then we'll say, nah, no, no.
We're gonna have time to think about it, because we wanna wait until after that, their line gets put in.
That's what that lift station, you know what you said?
Yeah.
And that lift station's all in the ground, right?
There'll be a generator.
Little box up on top, not much.
It's like when you see a football.
Right, Mickelson.
Yep.
Right. No big house up on top.
No.
All right. There's not gonna be one further east on the north side of ninety, they moved it that far west.
Yeah, we moved it that far out.
Right.
Very good.
I like that, yeah.
We will work on that and get that figured out on the road. Um, the only other thing is the sports complex. We, we, um, are working on a temporary waterline to sprinkle the fields, so we've got a couple fittings that we'll have tomorrow and we are just waiting for some hoses, which hopefully will be put together tomorrow. And so hopefully Friday we can start throwing some water on it to see what we're gonna get. Uh, we did get four more big sprinklers for Mike, so we've got it set up. We're, we're thinking we can run six big sprinklers at a time. We could do the whole area out there in probably two days of water and that'd be about a half inch, what we're looking at. But we are going to get it going and we're gonna monitor the water usage real close, because as I was telling the park board, we could probably spend five hundred to eight hundred dollars every time we water that whole area out there, those fields. So it's, so we'll be keeping a close eye and see where we're at for water usage of that, so we monitor that. We'll decide how much we wanna throw on to, but that'd be about a half inch on, at a time, so.
Was that planned in budget at all for this?
Not this year, no, so we'll have to plan for it in the future.
How does it look right now? I haven't really driven it, driven it.
It's looking better than all the rain we got. And we did put the sprinklers out there just to see what they'd act like and how big of an area they'd spread here, uh, a week ago. And you can definitely tell where we have them at. There's a drain circle up there. So, and we had them on for about forty-five minutes that one day and we just moved it from one spot to the next to see how much water we're using to see, get a coverage area, see what we have. Like I said, it's all gonna be above ground. We'll just put it out during the days and move it in and I, just leave the, the hard pipe, you know, still be there. We'll just bring sprinklers down to the hard pipe. We're looking at putting like the one going to the soccer fields. There is that little valley there between the two big fields, so we're putting that right down that valley, so.
Yeah, once you got, man, if you got good grass, you gotta keep good grass, I think.
And the ground is so hard. I mean, it would, wouldn't take long for during the soccer to have destroyed.
Yeah.
So like I said, we'll just monitor pretty close and we'll watch how much, how much water we're putting out to calculate how much we're, depth we're getting, if we're getting a half inch on there at a time, or what, we're gonna really need to get that.
We will plan for extra water, like in budget. I assume next year we will be.
What's that gonna cost us?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's my question. We don't, we don't sue the charge out.
No. And the number, and the number we were figuring is what it would actually cost, uh, normal accounts, you know, not actual, it's cost of the city, what it's actually costing.
And that's what it does cost us. We pay a water bill like everybody else.
Yeah, we'll pay a lot.
It will cost us that.
The one hundred pounds gain is stronger.
We're not buying a wholesale there.
Right, no, the city gets charged just like every resident and, yeah.
That's all I got in my report.
All right, any questions for Craig? All right, Karen is also on vacation. You see her report is in the packet. They've been getting some sales tax money from the state. That's always good.
Numbers are down a little. We don't have a year date. It seems like it was above quite a bit last month, so it's kind of just out of the rolls, I suppose.
Okay, revenue, expenses year to date?
Just year over year on the cash balances and.
The revenue expenses she has, the year to date, yeah.
That is, oh, there it is, year to date.
And Karen and Teresa are using that interstate index fund, removing money. They'll let us move money back and forth.
Yeah.
Can we say publicly what, how much we're getting?
Huh?
For interest, yeah.
I think that's pretty accurate what they give people. It's two point six, two point six five, I think.
Two and a half.
So we can move some money over there.
So Karen's been, yeah, looking at it every week or two and when we get a little excess in our savings balance, she'll move it to that index money, because like when we started it up, we can move it back and maybe if we need it or whatnot.
Is that not sitting in the general fund number eight?
Yes, it's all part of the general fund. It's just different accounts. It's just, it's, it's into the higher interest grade account, but it's all general fund money, yes.
Maybe we'll pay for Craig's water out of the sports complex.
I've seen some CD rates for four point eight for seven months, four point five for nine months. Crazy, crazy CD rates, so.
Yeah.
Keep an, keep an eye open for those opportunities.
It's not crazy, but it's.
A lot of scene for a while.
It's as good as they've done for.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll hear him watching that.
I have to pull my nose quick, sorry.
All right, Teresa, anything you need to add to your report?
Um, just wanted to touch base on a couple things. You all got my text, uh, Western Avenue, they're doing it today and I don't know if they, do you think any?
Yeah.
So that's a good thing, got that done. Um, we are, me and Craig are going to meet with ISG. We got the meeting set up today, um, on the twelfth. We're gonna go over CIP, so you'll have that information for budget, just as a guide too. Um, also, you know, we talked about changing that fine rate when we talked with P and Z. They think we should suck them to two hundred dollars a day and keep it there, so, so we're not gonna make any changes unless council feels strongly any other way. They feel that they get their warning of two weeks to move and that's enough time and we can start filing, you know? And if we have to go to court, we have to go to court with that, so. Strong feeling one way or the other, we'll just keep status quo, enough to do.
Well, I have an example of a property, not attended, nobody.
Nobody living there?
Nobody live in there. It's an undeveloped parcel. Person that received the mail for the parcel traveled a lot, didn't get their mail for several weeks. By the time they got their mail, I think the window had already shut and the media was ticking on the fines.
But if you know you're gonna be on several weeks, should you?
Yeah, it's your, it's your undeveloped parcel. It is, it's a drought. Essentially, you know, everything else is dead and dying. You kind of forget about it. It's an oversight now, so really, it's not willful. It's an oversight. Well, it is what it is.
Yeah, I have an issue when governments start, uh, trying to take control of people's personal properties.
Right.
You know, I mean.
Right.
It's my personal opinion, but yeah.
But if you don't, it looks like our neighbor across the road.
I know, I think there's gray, I think there's gray lines and, um, I agree, you can have some things like that, but.
Yeah.
So we'll just keep the regulations that are, you know, what's status quo. We, we have the mechanism in place to address them if we need to.
I think with today's mail, you can get an email that tells you everything you're gonna receive that day. Yeah, so there's technology on there to kind of poo poo.
Oh, yes, you can. Yeah, you can see what comes through the mail, sign up at the post office, so.
There's a workroom.
Not, not if your mail's delivered to a P O box.
There's our problem, because I think it was delivered to a P O box.
If you can't, I get that service home for my mail.
Yeah.
But not P O box.
Not through P O box.
Oh, why is that? It's privacy issues because. Oh, really? Yeah, but isn't your mail into your own box? That really sounds. Regulations?
It's like you guys don't work with the government at all. I just feel like you don't know how to stop it.
To Benjamin's point, there'll be more of a chain of possession, right? The chain of possession to a personal mailbox is broken as soon as the mailman delivers it. Now, now it's, somebody, everybody has access to it. Whereas a P O box, in theory.
It's protected.
It's USA's all the way to the P O box.
Right. It, it's no different than walking outside and somebody outside taking pictures of the flowers when you're in this camera shot. You have your own privacy outside, because you're in public. You know, your, your expectation is privacy. You abandon those and then walk out your door and step out in public. So I, I think that's the post office's reason that starts, my in-law that works for the post office downtown has told me, they can't go to the P O box for privacy reasons, but mailboxes are okay. You know, for that.
And like you said, it's like we don't ever work with the government.
All right, thanks Benjamin for your input. That's, that's good to know. Anything else, Teresa?
Um, just I wanted to point out, just to bring to your attention, make sure you saw with their transit bus, uh, the DOT is doing an inspection on it on the eleventh. It is in pretty rough shape. It's an older bus. We've had issues, broken fenders. It has one window that needed to be sealed shut. It's actually an emergency window, so I'm not even really sure. Code anymore, what you have, um, we're having issues now with the doors opening, closing the, the main doors, um, little things have gone wrong with it here and there, so I'm not really sure how it's gonna come out in the inspection. Um, Rock manages our system, so basically, you know, we pay, we pay them seven thousand dollars a year. They hire a driver. They take care of all the expenses. They, they manage everything with it. Um, so talked to a representative with Rocks, um, last week about it. And, um, basically if the DOT puts it out of commission, they do have, uh, like a wheelchair van that they said that's not being used at the time, you know, we think we got a workaround that we could get by with that and maybe apply for a grant for a different bus, you know, next year. The grant application deadline's passed this year, but you know, we can maybe get along with the wheelchair, you know, van that they have. They will let us use it and then hopefully apply for a grant and possibly get one if, if a new bus is needed. Um, those grants are usually eighty, twenty.
Buy for one anyway.
Uh, yeah, it's in rough shape, so I, we're really thinking the DOT is gonna say, nah, it shouldn't be on the road, but I guess we'll see. I, I think regardless, even if we get past the DOT, I think, like I said, we're gonna apply for a grant anyway. I think it's needed just to keep the service up and going through that, so, um, I'll keep you posted on that.
It is newer than our maintainer though.
Oh, here you go.
Oh, what a plug. What a plug.
Yeah, every chance, every chance. Now we're gonna start hearing about window issues with the maintainers. Oh, yeah, because it broke with the rock or something.
And then, um, next week also on the twelfth, um, me, Craig and Amy are meeting with, uh, Roll Water to talk about our contract for our water allocations. We've, um, sent, um, we kind of went through all our annexed property and come up with what we think our future needs are, which are at our current contract amount. So we wanna go through those numbers and talk with them and start those negotiations with them, so keep you posted on that as well.
Good.
The only thing I really need to point out.
That's a lot. All right, any questions for Teresa? If not, we'll move on to new business. We got a couple items on the new business. First one is to review and discuss our, um, assessment policy on streets and sidewalks. We presently charge two hundred bucks a running foot on replacements.
Um, yes, um, we've had a, a general assessment policy in place for many years now, where we review this every year just to see if we're, still makes sense, if we're staying on top of the costs, you know, what a street would be or whatnot. For the longest time it was at, uh, the two hundred dollars a linear foot. Why I should say the longest time, last couple, three years it's been at that. Um, I did, um, see if Michael could throw me a, a number of what that estimated cost is now, and I put that in my report of what he come up with. That's, right now it's costing about two hundred and twenty-five. Now that's basically to do just a, a local residential or commercial street. That's not an industrial beefed up for concrete or, well, you know, an oversized one or anything that, that would just be, you know, a, a normal street cost, which is what we've kind of looked at when we reviewed the assessment policy before. Um, there is no, um, engineering fee in it, um, city's always kind of took that on ourselves as far as that goes, you know? Uh, we haven't ever figured that into our general assessment policy. We've always paid those engineering costs upfront and those contingency costs upfront to the city. So we just looked at what it would be for a regular street section and, and the sidewalk included, and, um, right now, like I said, it's costing about two hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot now. Do we want to change our assessment policy to kind of go with the cost of it? Or do we wanna keep at the two hundred? We did not change it last year, so it's been two years since we have changed the policy. We kept status quo last year. So we're looking at if we wanna make any changes this year to our policy.
I would love to see it moved to two twenty-five foot. I mean, just, it is what it is.
Yeah, costs are rising, I mean, so if we don't assess it, I mean, that's obviously more the, the city's gotta take on, you know?
So do we bring it back down? Hopefully if costs go down.
Oh, you're so pushy.
It's loving positive.
We don't have any locally old cement plants anymore. Well, I mean, state used to have, they're all cement plants, yeah. But, yeah, our, our.
So do we need a, like a, a motion here, or do we just seem to say, let's change it the next time?
I'm gonna say, I will actually revise, so if we wanna see changes, I'll incorporate those changes into a new resolution that will come before you at the next meeting. So this is more or less to discuss it, see if you wanna make changes and, uh, we can go from there.
Hi, Greg Jenkins.
Same with, same with the rates.
Yeah, exactly. It's good to have an annual review to stay up, yeah.
Well, we know from looking at our, uh, wastewater treatment plant, when we look through those numbers, that's the one that boosted that thing up as much as it did with concrete three bar rather than with electrical. They all did, yeah, because that's an easy target. Sorry, it's an easy target. All right, so I'd say go ahead and work that resolution up and present it.
Basically what we're looking at is, um, changing, um, redoing an existing street to the two twenty-five.
Yeah.
And then, and obviously all the rest of them are, you know, the actual cost, so. Okay, I will present a new resolution to you at your next meeting.
All right. Uh, next one on our new, new business is to discuss and review the city's billboard rates.
Do you have any idea what other billboards are going for?
I don't know exact cost for it. I think we are cheaper, especially the one hundred fifty a, a month. My husband was renting a billboard by Brandon and I think it was costing them for a while like three hundred dollars a month. Hence they only rented it for a year and then canceled it because they thought they weren't getting the advertising out of what they were paying for.
Feel like if there's a waitlist, we should increase it, especially if we haven't increased it in seven, six.
Well, this is existing rates since two thousand and six on the east face.
Well, this has existed since two thousand and six on the east face.
Yes, but, so we reviewed them in two thousand and eighteen. Um, we did not change, we did not change that rate on the east face. Um, I think basically, and I can't remember if Art and Travis were on the council that time, but I, I think we wanted to, they were mainly Hartford businesses, so we kind of wanted to give, you know, allow them to keep a break of that, you know, since they were Hartford businesses, so we didn't do any changing on that. Um, we did lower the ones on the west face, because at that time, we had about three empty, and we were having a hard time getting them rented out. I actually sent letters to, like, Love's Truck Stop, I mean, people that, you know, maybe you could get the business, and I did get a couple responses, I think I've heard you responded once, and kind of asked where they were, whatnot. Um, the issue, nobody rented, the issue there, I think, is because they are on the oppo, you know, when you're driving towards Sioux Falls, they are on the opposite side of the interstate, so, that makes them less desirable, so, since we were having trouble renting them out, we decided, well, we'll just charge a flat one hundred and fifty for all of them, and so, we do, like I said, this time, um, there's one being worked on, and, um, a couple of them being worked on, a couple issues that will have signs put up, but we will have just one open one, it'd be billboard number one going towards Sioux Falls. Like I said, there's one that got damaged in the, the storm last May, that's getting repaired, and then we need to clean up some shrubbery and stuff on the, uh, the, on billboard number six, okay, it's done today, and, uh, then Ace is interested in putting one up there, so.
Well, who cares, we want to get them ready.
How do we market that? Like, when these billboards are up for renewal, how are we getting the word out to people, you know, to business owners, or how is that process work?
The renewal, so we do get the, we do send, we give first chance to the ones that are already on there, because they've been, they pay for the vinyl on this, so really, all we're doing is giving them the space. They've got a, which, that's about two, three thousand dollars in vinyl now, so, we do give them first chance to rent it, and then if they don't want to rent it out, like I said, I do have an actual waiting list for the ones that are going, you know, west face, for people in town that are looking for it, um, but I don't on the ones going towards.
Okay.
Seems like we should increase the ones where there's a waitlist, and not the ones where there's not.
Yes, I don't think we have trouble getting that from the businesses coming into town.
Right. Yeah, there's a.
That's a rolling, that would be a rolling change, and as they come up for renewal.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, the ones we're already in contracts with will have to stay the same, so it's just when they come up for renewal, it'll be a new rate, and we'll see if they want to renew.
What's, what's still, because these are, these are most, these are Hartford businesses, we want to keep it reasonable, I think, and fair, um, what would be? I mean, I want to throw like a fifty percent increase out here, but like, I don't know if that's reasonable, even to think about that, or is it? Because it's only a hundred dollars, going to a hundred and fifty is probably not that outrageous, but over the course of a year, that's a six hundred dollar increase, you know, it's pretty big increase. So, I don't know.
Knowledge is power, facts are friendly.
Yeah, maybe we should do a little research on this and some information.
Just like everything, it may have jumped on more than we expected, I guess.
So, I could go and see if I can get a hold of some.
Obviously, there's one.
Other billboard company, see what rates are.
There's a monster south of our number one. It's up there about three feet in there, probably to the top. You know, it's angled, and it's well lit. Shrubbery is way above lower, the bottom of it starts, so, so that's, that's obviously billboard A.
Right, the one, so.
B or C maybe, and we're certainly not a digital billboard or anything, but, who knows, the rates may have changed a lot more than I speculated.
Have we ever, have we ever been contacted by like any billboard companies that are interested in just taking over these leases, I mean, just?
We have, we've actually done that in the past, quite a few years ago, once we had a company.
I just don't see, I just don't see a city, I mean, I just don't see a city's role in managing billboards, that's just.
Not really our forte, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, like?
Right now, it's eighteen hundred dollars a year, plus whatever their vinyl is.
Yep, yeah. I mean, you don't, you don't get much cheaper than that to advertise to you.
I don't advertise, I don't.
I know most traffic codes on I-90 are up there high. Yeah.
I mean, I would think, changing it to two hundred bucks is.
Two hundred bucks or find something.
And I would venture something, something.
We'll take a temperature if the waitlist disappears.
Some of these businesses must really benefit from this, Pizza Ranch obviously benefits, I mean, some of the businesses really benefit from that billboard, I would assume.
I just wonder if there's a company that can do it better, that specializes in billboards, you know, I'm thinking future, because obviously you got contracts you have to withhold too, but.
Right.
I can check on that, and I can see if I can call around some billboard companies, see what the going rates are whatnot, we can talk about this at future meetings.
Yep, do a little research and move that one forward.
Okay, we'll do.
All right, nothing else under new business, do we have anything for EXACT tonight?
First spell on our comic book.
All right.
Thank you, Ben.
Got a motion to move into EXACT, Travis?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Travis and Jake, yeah. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn from the meeting today, second.
All in favor?
Aye.